Call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, August 25th to order. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Here.
Jim Batsin.
Here.
Alex Delapoli.
Here.
Dr. Rudy.
Here.
Karen Monstod.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Rats. .
Here. Okay, we know Alex Delapoli's absent for the record. Our agenda this morning, or this evening, we will have an educational presentation. The school year just started, but we also, we already have some student recognition, I can see. Brief President's Report update from our plethora of student school board representatives. Nice to see everybody, welcome.
You're almost outnumbering us.
And then we'll have the student superintendent's report. We will then open it up for public comment. I will remind everybody, we'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month in committee. Updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Property Committee, Steven, nothing tonight, right? Okay. And I believe nothing from CEDO. Okay. And Illinois Association of School Board is also nothing. Alright, so that's it for tonight. Anything else? Alright, let's start out with our student recognition.
Dr. Fleming.
Well, just because the school year ends doesn't mean our students aren't accomplishing things over the summer, so we're gonna hear from two different groups tonight. We're gonna start with Diane Phillips and Al Lukens.
Good evening, I'm Diane Phillips.
I'm Adam Lukens.
And we are the co-advisors for the Future Business Leaders of America Club at Vernon Hills High School, and I would like to say that I am so proud, being a first-year sponsor, to have national champions that represent Vernon Hills High School at our competition that took place on the end of June, beginning of July in Nashville, Tennessee.
And so our boys are going to present what they did, and we're very excited. This is Nurey Akarati and Alex Lau.
Good evening, my name's Alex Lau.
And my name is Nurey Akarati.
And we're seniors from Vernon Hills High School, and we are proud to welcome you to our official Public Service Announcement presentation.
Now, why do we get motivated to choose this topic in the first place? Well, one of the biggest problems in America today is the rising obesity epidemic, and the only way to solve this problem is by eating right and exercising. Our target audience is none other than the teenagers and adolescents of America. As teenagers ourselves, we can better connect with this demographic and have a much stronger message. The purpose of our video is to fight a disease that is rampant amongst the teenage population, and that's none other than apathy. Teenagers are apathetic to do everything, whether it be getting up early enough to eat a simple, healthy breakfast, or even doing their homework every single night. Now, to put this apathy to the test and see if it was really true, we created our very own survey. We like to call it the Apathy Survey. And according to our results, eighty-five percent of the surveyed students said that they had the capability of exercise, meaning that they had the time and the resources to do so, they just chose not to, out of pure apathy.
Now, this student says that he feels that exercise does not benefit him, so instead, he uses his time to do activities that he feel it does benefit him. While this student simply cannot motivate herself to get out of the bed and wake up and go. Now, to fight this apathy, our video leads by example. We take it through a high school student's viewpoint, which makes it more relatable and more motivational for our entire audience. Now, without further ado, we are proud to present to you our official Public Service Announcement.
Every morning when your alarm goes off, you have a choice. You can hit the snooze button and sleep another hour, or make a good choice and wake up. Eat right and exercise. No matter what age, eating a balanced breakfast is the perfect way to get your day started. Incorporating one hour of exercise to your daily routine like a quick jog is all you need. So what are you waiting for? The time to change is now.
So my associate and I are wondering, why stop there? Why only make a video when you can do so much more to fight this problem? To do that, we created our own website, WakeUpAndGo.org. This website features all information that can be found in the video, all with tips, tricks, and even guides to help you achieve your goal. Now, to allow us to do this, we underwent some extensive research. We thought that the ideal breakfast is pretty simple, and we were able to show this in a video using kashi goliath cereal, organic berries, and organic whole milk. We also found that running was the most efficient type of exercise available today. Not only is it accessible to almost everybody, but it also offers a multitude of benefits for the user.
Now, a little bit about the shots in our PSA. We use fast-paced video to keep our audience constantly interested. We shot in HD at sixty frames per second for the best image quality and the most fluid motion. And last but certainly not least, we implemented an advanced film editing technique known as color correction. This gives all of our shots a very uniform and professional feel. Now, here are just a couple of thumbnails exempling the different techniques that were implemented into our Public Service Announcement. Now, the song that's playing in the background is actually called "Spring," and we purchased the full copyright license to this song from AudioJungle.net. This gives us the legal right to use this in our video, and this is completely different from just purchasing a song off of iTunes, for example. Now, for our sources, we use Fitness.gov, HealthyChildren.org, BodyandSoul.com, Active.com, and RunnersWorld.com. Our narration was done by Edcom Group LLC, and our actress was Vernon Hills High School senior Natalie Miller, who's with us in the audience today. Now, for our equipment and software, we used two Canon DSLR cameras, two Canon lenses, a lighting kit, a tripod, two MacBook Pros, and last but certainly not least, Final Cut Pro X to piece together and edit our Public Service Announcement. Now, before I conclude today's presentation, I'd like to leave everyone with a quote. "The time to change is now." And although we've been talking about eating right and exercising for the duration of the presentation, I really hope this is a quote that will follow you for many years to come, and will follow you throughout the many adventures in your lives. Thank you so much for your time, and I'd like to now open the floor to any further questions.
Well, I'll say incredible. Okay, congratulations guys.
And we also have...
Some hardware that they won.
Some hardware, and they received some big checks from National, so we got those...
How big were the checks?
They're each getting five hundred dollars.
That's great.
Great.
Congratulations.
Alright, so, you know, from my perspective, we spend a lot of time and we measure our academic performance, and we do all those things, and we do a great job of it, but I honestly believe it's what we do here and at Libertyville High School and programs like that that really make the difference and set our kids on a great footing for their future endeavors. I'm sure those presentation skills weren't honed overnight, and I think it's really the kinds of practice and preparation that we give all you guys a chance to do that is just really an awesome part of what we do here at District 128, so great job. By the way, that was National.
Yes.
I know, I know, we said that three times. Okay. President's Report, you know, just a few brief words, I'd just like to thank everybody that kicked off the school year. I know I've actually had some emails and phone calls and comments around the community about what a great opening it was. We had a few new people, or new people in roles, and everything just went really great. So I know I enjoyed my two days or two mornings with the teachers and staff, and I always appreciate all that enthusiasm and energy and, you know, everybody saying they're glad to be back, and so I appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and hard to believe we're off and running on another school year. Alright, so great job, and thanks to everybody that was part of it. Next, the reports from the school board reps. So organizationally, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this. I bet they're organizing. So I'll just kinda go with the flow at this point and look forward to what you have to say.
We can go first.
Let's start, let's start from LHS.
Yeah, okay, I can start. Okay, so we're just gonna start off like with the first day of school. So on the first day, we had a senior class breakfast and a panorama photo, as well as Dr. Scott participating in the ice bucket challenge, so that was pretty exciting. Also, like the kids who came directly at eight o'clock were all rewarded with free homecoming tickets, so that was an added bonus. Also, Student Council was trying out a new thing called video announcements, and it's an effort to help all students like get involved in school-wide events and just make a more visual, like interesting kind of way instead of just hearing it on the speakers. And also, they introduced the new Student Council Executive Board as well. In addition, sorry. We also had the Back to School Bash last Friday, which is a real hit. The students made a lot of T-shirts, which were really fun, and they are planning on wearing them to the first homecoming, to the first football game, which is September 5th against Lake Forest, and there was lots of dancing and games and just a whole lot of fun, so.
Just a quick question, how do we actually use these microphones?
Should be on.
Okay, just push.
Yeah, just push and it'll ring.
Test, test, yeah? Alright, okay, fantastic. Alright, so as far as academics go, people are finally getting themselves out of summer mode, we have the second week of school starting out. A lot of the academic extracurriculars are starting again, starting up. Debate team, where we took a couple of titles last year at State, will have their first meeting next Wednesday on September 3rd, and we've actually upped our tournament count. Debate historically has done pretty well at the state and local tournaments. We usually go to four per year, we're expanding that to eight this year, and we're having some introductory novice lessons for the new members this year, so we're excited about that. As far as math team goes, we won state in our division last year to Vernon Hills, who Graceville took first. And again, the meeting starts Tuesdays after school, we usually run about an hour and a half, and we're excited for that as well. And finally, Model United Nations is the third club that I'm most involved in, and Model United Nations has grown a lot the last couple of years. I remember as a freshman, we averaged maybe twenty to thirty people per meeting on Thursdays after school, and in the last year or two, we've grown to maybe seventy or eighty people per meeting, and that's a pretty large portion considering our chest is only about two thousand kids. So we go to four conferences every year, we go to a conference in Chicago, a conference at Northwestern, Brown University, and Columbia. So the season's starting off, we'll space those out. And as far as actual classes go, I was kind of getting themselves back into the school mode, but one of the things I noticed personally was the increased prevalence of technology in the classrooms. I remember last year, we saw Chromebooks every so often, and they would have the large carts, but now we're actually seeing Chromebooks in almost all my classes, AP Calculus, BC in all the classes I'm in, and we don't even use textbooks anymore, we now went straight to online textbooks. And AP Physics, we're now using iPads to involve students, they can write down their work submitted to the teacher. It's more of a, it's a faster, more direct way to involve students with the teachers, and there's some backlash right now, some people are kind of, you know, wary of the changes, but I think that'll pass, and I think it's gonna be for the better. So looking forward to the year, yeah.
In terms of clubs and sports, fall sports began a couple of weeks ago, and student athletes are getting acclimated to handling both school and athletics. Girls volleyball hosted a sand volleyball fundraiser this past weekend, I think with some teachers in it as well. Football had its annual scrimmage on Friday. Clubs including Amnesty International have already met for the first time, and some other activities, including NHS, the National Honors Society, and the math team, as well as athletes committed to excellence, meet this week. Student Council Executive Board has been meeting every day. Twenty-fourteen members include Cam Chen, Dolores Palmeri, Joey Pacino, Jenny Pang, Alex Yor, and Shannon Roach. There are at least a couple of new clubs at LHS, including an Ultimate Frisbee Club met today for the first time. There's talk of a resurgence of the Young Entrepreneurs Club. And finally, musical auditions began, or begin, on August 26th for Spamalot is the
So for Vernon Hills Student Activities and Affairs, for the first time in district history, Student Council is giving the opportunity for students to vote for their homecoming theme. The two choices are between a night at the Grammys and homecoming at Hogwarts, and it's a close, it's a very close race. Grammys is in the lead by ten votes. Closing ends on Thursday, and we will be announcing the theme on Friday. Also, to kick off the year, a junior who wanted to remain anonymous welcomed the freshmen to their high school career by writing each of their names on a note card, and on the back wrote a personalized tip for high school, and taped it onto the lockers of each of the freshmen with a dumb-dumb lollipop. And it really brought their spirits up because you can tell in the hallways, like they felt a lot more confident, knowing I had a younger sister, and she felt so much better knowing that their upperclassmen, like rooting for her to improve. Third, the First Class Club, which promotes like good morals and behavior, is starting a new campaign called hashtag VH Give, and each month they're trying to incorporate a different theme such as time, support, hope, respect, strength, and thanks. So, such as giving time, so you might help out a friend who needs help in a class, so you might tutor them. And what they're trying to do is try to string along in social media, so it'll connect, it all connects when you follow the trend. And their like quote for the year is, "Giving is not an act, it's a lifestyle," so we're trying to implement that in the students. And recently, Vernon Hills Student Council has created a Facebook page, Twitter page, and Instagram page, which they're trying to post almost daily or weekly with all the new information that's coming up with student students.
So next we have Vernon Hills Athletics, and not much has happened so far, a lot of the athletics are starting up this week, competition-wise. Our football team did have their annual scrimmage last Friday, and it went really well. After the game, I believe there were four coaches who did participate in the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, which was great for the fans, actually, they loved it. Also, very important in our school this year is mandatory concussion video for every student athlete. It will be available during our lunch hour, or some of the coaches have decided to watch the video as a program. And we're, as an athlete, we're all really excited for the school year, and we just can't wait.
Greetings from the Vernon Hills Music Department, or Finance Department. We are really excited to be starting our Guys and Dolls musical auditions this week. We had a dance workshop today, and auditions will be taking place on Wednesday and Thursday, with callbacks on Friday. We hope for a cast of about thirty to forty students, and we are super excited, because it's Guys and Dolls, why not? Chamber Retreat, which is our elite choir that consists of twenty-two students, went on our retreat this past weekend up in Freedonia, Wisconsin. It was a really fun time, we worked really hard to get ready for our magical dessert, which takes place on December 13th. The orchestra this year, Symphony Orchestra, was invited to be a demonstration orchestra at the Midwest Clinic sometime in December, which is a very high honor, because they only invite the highest qualities of orchestras to perform. I'm in that orchestra. And as for choir in general, we are planning and getting ready for our choir tour, which we, in which we are going to be touring parts of Europe in, during spring break, which include parts of Paris and Amsterdam. And for the band, we, they will be going to Hawaii this spring break, so they're super excited and preparing for that. Thank you.
Alright, very well done, extremely well done. I only have one question for the Vernon Hills side, how is your new principal?
Remember, you're on camera.
Everything's going well.
He's awesome.
That was good.
Alright, so we look forward to getting together throughout the school year, and I think we will, I could use your help a little bit, try something a little different this year, and we'll let you know what that is, we haven't figured that out yet, but I'd like to, I actually, I'd like to kind of pick up on the technology and social media thing, so that may be a tabletop conversation at some point. At work, we like to talk about what, so what, now what? So, think about what, so what, now what, maybe we'll talk about technology, and I'd be curious how you, like our approach to the whole Chromebook thing, I know, underline, I think everybody's getting a Chromebook this year. But most importantly, my interest in that is really in how we've integrated the technology in the curriculum and how it's really sort of fostered and enabled your learning, and what you're doing with all that. So maybe that'll be our first lunchtime conversation. I saw a little bit of enthusiasm there when we talked about technology. Alright, great job. You guys meet all summer, figure that out? I mean, that was pretty well organized. Alright, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, just a couple of things, jump back to our students again, just for everyone else here in the audience, let's start out at the end, and why don't you introduce yourselves? Tell us what school you're at, of course, we know Libertyville, Vernon Hills, from watching that, so maybe you don't have to do that, but tell us what year you are in school right now.
Okay, I'm Gina Palmeri, and I'm a senior at LHS.
My name's Uncle Sogi, I'm also a senior at LHS.
I'm Sam Gold, also a senior.
I'm Natalie Rose Scott, I'm also a senior.
I'm Tori Smith, I'm also a senior.
I'm Lynette Horta, and I am a senior as well.
Great, thank you. We have one other piece of recognition, this student recognition this evening. One small group of students was not able to attend tonight, or a student, and we actually have some slides from the work, and I think Marina's going to narrate for us.
Who you see up here is Nicole Pink, and she's been in our fashion and clothing classes since her freshman year, and she's gotten many awards, but she also went to Nationals for FCC LA, and she took first in clothing design. So you can see, I thought you might like to see, her dress is right here. On the right is not actually the dress, it's in muslin, so when you're designing, you make it first in muslin, which is a cheap fabric, where you can make the changes, and then her fashion fabric is on the right there. And I believe she made the dress she has on as well. She makes a lot of the things she wears, you guys might know Nicole, but she graduated last year, so she could not be here tonight. I had one more slide of the two teachers who went with her, you'll see Katie Hylla on the left, and Monica Patterson on the right, and Monica Patterson has been her teacher for the last four years, and Monica's retiring this year. That will be a great loss to that program, she's a very great teacher, and she really helps that talent thrive in students.
And Marina, just to note again, that was first in the nation?
Yes.
Okay. National champion.
Oh, this is about to be a little closer up.
Yeah, great. Well, let's give her a round of applause.
And she's in college right now in Las Vegas, studying fashion design.
Super wonderful, great, thank you Marina. Some additional good news this evening, first ninety-five LHS and VHHS student athletes participated in the North Suburban Conference Leadership Conference on August 17th at Stevenson High School. More than six hundred NSC student athletes attended the conference, which was moderated by Greg Dale, Director of Sports Psychology and Leadership Programs for Duke University. The following D-18 teachers have met the district's rigorous requirements to achieve tenured status, and were recognized at the D-128 All Staff Opening Day Program. Patricia Shalemie, Elaine Patrica, Mona Thornton, Sarai Nieto, Shabon Zabo, Amy Belstra, Carrie Niemitt, Emily Corner, Amy Christian, Jacqueline Newman, and Tara Nieve. So congratulations to all of them. LHS senior Alex Jean earned the highest possible score of thirty-six on the ACT test. The following LHS teams achieved a three-point-five total cumulative grade point average during the 2014 athletic season, qualifying them for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Award. The sports were girls basketball, boys basketball, girls bowling, boys bowling, girls gymnastics, boys swimming and diving, boys wrestling, baseball, boys gymnastics, girls soccer, girls softball, boys tennis, boys track and field, girls track and field, boys volleyball, boys water polo, and girls water polo. So congratulations to our athletes. Next on the Superintendent's Agenda tonight is certification of attainment of FY14 Established Performance Recognition Bonus Criteria, and I am pleased to tell the board tonight that the faculty and staff and administration of the district has met all five contract target areas for achievement, and they are: percentage of students tested in advanced placement, the contract goal was twenty-point-eight, the staff achieved a thirty-point-five number, and percentage of three, fours, and five scores on the eight advanced placement tests overall, the contract target was eighty-seven-point-seven, and the district reached eighty-nine-point-eight. An ACT composite, the contract target is twenty-four-point-eight, the district was at twenty-five-point-three, which again will put us in the top two percent of all Illinois and national high schools. And on the last year of the Prairie State Achievement Exam, the contract target was eighty-point-eight, and the district scored eighty-three-point-seven. In extracurricular athletic participation, the contract goal was ninety-two, ninety-point-two percent, and the district reached ninety-point-six percent. So I want to certify for the board tonight that the staff has met all five of the contract goals, and we'll be coming back next month to actually move on the performance bonus. So congratulations, everyone, and great work to the students, again, as always. Next on the Superintendent's Report, some of you have been reading some things in the news media about the breakup or split of the North Suburban Conference. As you're probably aware, the conference, as it has stood for several years now, is made up of fourteen schools, and they're divided into two divisions. Lakes Division, which is essentially the larger schools and more competitive schools in the conference, and the Prairie Division, which are enrollment-wise the smaller schools. That conference has been together for several years now, and the conference has functioned well. I was contacted on around June 10th by a representative of six of the Prairie Division schools to attend a meeting on June 12th at the Tech Campus, and the purpose of that meeting was to inform the remaining schools that six of the schools were going to split off in the conference and create their own conference, and add the two Grayslake schools, which would, Grayslake Central and Grayslake North, which are currently in the Fox Valley Conference. That would give them a conference of eight schools. After we processed that information a bit and did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, we essentially raised several questions with those six schools, and those questions were: as a school in good standing in the current NSC Prairie Division, was Vernon Hills considered for membership in the possible new conference? Second question, if yes, why was the district not contacted about the possibility before a decision was made not to include Vernon Hills High School in a possible new conference? If the answer was no, that Vernon Hills was not considered, why was Vernon Hills not considered for membership in the new conference? And why was the district not contacted to discuss the reasons that Vernon Hills was not considered? In addition, we also raised the question that if the new conference were to be formed, would the conference consider after the fact adding Vernon Hills to the conference, which would make Vernon Hills a ninth school in the conference? I have not received a formal response from the group of six who are currently in our conference to those questions, and that's disconcerting to us. As John will note, Marina also is a principal, Vernon Hills is the second smallest school in the current NSC Conference, and their ability to compete particularly in a sport like football that requires high numbers of students is impacted if they are regularly competing against much larger schools, for example, Libertyville, Stevenson, Lake Zurich, Warren, all who are in very large schools. So where does that leave us at this point? It appears that the six Prairie Division schools plus Grayslakes, the two Grayslakes High Schools, have taken sufficient action to create the new conference. We have our first Superintendent's, NSC Superintendent's meeting next week, and we'll get more information on whether that conference is going to begin in 2016-17 or 15-16. We were led to believe that we would have, it would take two additional years to plan for the conference. Actually, that would be in our best interest to have those two... Actually, that would be in our best interest to have those two years. That will give us time to look at other options, possible options for Vernon Hills. So what happens in the interim? What happens to Vernon Hills in the interim if there are no other options once the conference is turned over, let's say in 16-17? For now, Vernon Hills has a home in the conference, they are certainly welcome in the Lakes Division, which will retain the North Suburban Conference title. Right now, we're calling it the NSC Eight, just so we don't have to consistently say, you know, the current conference or the future conference with Vernon Hills. And all of those schools, of course, are happy to have Vernon Hills in that conference. Myself, John, and Brian McDonald, along with a number of other people, will continue to look at options, you know, over the, next year and the following year for Vernon Hills to see if we can create a situation that's better for them, starting with football, which is the most problematic, and secondly, with other sports. That doesn't mean that we never want to, Vernon Hills never wants to compete against Libertyville or Stevenson in, in sports. In fact, in some of the sports, there are not enough schools that participate in those sports to have two divisions of the conference, so we only have one conference tournament. Swimming is a good example of that, that we all compete together. So as we move forward, we'll continue to evaluate, you know, our options and our athletic directors, the NSC Eight Athletic Directors have already met and they've created a timeline for what needs to be done to redo, if you will, the NSC Eight. We're going to have to change the constitution to go back to eight schools, we'll have to rewrite some rules, conference tournaments, et cetera, moving forward. But both Brian Kelly and Brian McDonald are active members of that group and they're both participating in those activities moving forward. So the other question is, what caused the breakup? When you have an odd number of schools in football, it creates what we call a crossover game. Both of the conferences having seven schools, they play two out of conference games at the beginning of the year and then during the season, weeks three through nine, one of the schools in both of the conferences has an open game. Since all the other schools in Illinois are already into conference play, there is no opportunity to schedule a school without traveling out of state. It becomes very difficult. So for a number of years in our conference, as there is in the Central Suburban League, in the Mid Suburban League that are just kind of south and west of us, there is a crossover game. And in that crossover game, Vernon Hills, for example, has played Stevenson in the past and they've played Warren and they've played some other large schools. So that has been an ongoing issue in the conference. The athletic directors have worked for four to five years to try and resolve that problem. It's a very difficult problem to resolve when you have an odd number of schools, either seven or nine, it's going to create a crossover possibility. And at the end of the day, I think that's what's driven a lot of the discussion. We have looked at this issue every year that I've been the superintendent and probably prior to that. We had a large discussion, matrix group this year, which included four superintendents, four, three superintendents, three athletic directors, no, four, I was right the first time. So we had representation from superintendents, principals, and athletic directors and we took a year-long look at some of the related issues to see if we could resolve them. And when the report was fostered at the end of the year, the athletic directors group, principals group, and the superintendents group all chose not to even vote on the report because it was evident by trying to fix the football crossover game, we would actually create more complex problems for the conference. And for those of us that were athletes and were coaches and we've spent a lot of time around athletics, one of the things about being in a conference, whether it's a high school or at the university level, is there is always something that doesn't work well for every school in a conference. That's part of being in a conference, that's kind of part of being in the family. I think this level has risen to the point, my discussion with my colleagues in the Prairie Division, the smaller school division, it's just risen to the level that they felt that they needed to address it with their communities and this was the reaction to that. So I'll finish with this, why those six schools and why not five of those six schools and Vernon Hills? Think geographically, if you look at where those schools are at, they're kind of all around Grayslake to the west and the northwest part of the county. And that created a geography, I think, for them to move forward with that. I will continue to pursue answers to our questions as we're moving forward, although I'm not certain that I'm going to get a formal response from the six of those schools to that question. I think John said it best on opening day with his staff when they were updating the Vernon Hills staff on this and that is, you know, whatever lays before us, we're going to do the best job we can in terms of working through that. But there, we think there are some options out there, some creative solutions, particularly in football, and we're going to continue to have discussions with our colleagues in the area to see how we might best particularly address football and then eventually the other sports at Vernon Hills. John, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add or Marina that you'd like to add to that at this time.
Yeah, I think that's what we hit with our staff at the end was that in the end, there's part of this that we have very little control of, aside from pursuing some avenues that we think might be possibilities. But the reality is, there's not seven schools out there that are just waiting to join a conference and who would be the eighth? So, we'll pursue those that are there, but in the end, you know, our kids, our great kids, our coaches, our great coaches, athletics isn't the only thing that we excel at, we excel at a lot more than just that and we'll continue to do that and we'll, you know, we'll rise to the occasion if it means that we got to play with those big, big schools weekend and wiki out, we'll do our best, so keep on keeping on, right?
Marina, would you like that?
Yeah, for Libertyville, people, if they didn't know about it, they wouldn't really notice the difference because we're playing, we played on that side of the conference, so we'll be playing the same teams, just the crossovers won't exist. So it's a very different story for our two schools, how it affects us, so it doesn't greatly affect us.
A couple of questions that we've addressed in some FAQ, particularly for the Vernon Hills folks, and one of those questions is, is it possible for Vernon Hills and Libertyville to be in two different conferences? And the answer is, of course. We're, you know, my recommendation would never be, and my decision-making would never be, to prevent Vernon Hills from being in a different conference that might better serve their students. It's unfortunate, we weren't asked that question as, as part of this process, if we would entertain that, but certainly. I come from, with my background in, in several school districts that I've worked in, many of those school districts had schools in different conferences because it better met the needs of their students and so, of course, we, you know, would entertain that moving forward. So that's a big question that we get asked a lot, well, of course, you wouldn't let your two schools, well, of course, we would. If it would better serve the students at Vernon Hills, then we would allow that to happen. So that's always a possibility down the road too. I think what's, what's kind of tipped the balance in terms of information, we wanted to, I wanted to make sure that the conference was actually going to happen, which required the approval of their school boards in order for that to happen. And I believe there are through the cycle of the schools that were in our conference in order to do that, and I know Grayslake did that a couple of weeks ago. So that means it's definitive now and we'll start moving forward. It'll be a little awkward, you know, over the next year or probably two years as we're kind of continuing to work together, but the superintendents and the principals and the athletic directors, of course, are professionals and we're going to do what's right for students all the time. And I do want to leave our folks with this, we believe, and I think there's evidence to support that, in athletics, in student activities, as you've seen a small but very powerful two examples tonight, and most importantly academically, we believe that the North Suburban Conference is the best overall conference in the state of Illinois. And when we do the conference split, it's still going to be the best overall conference in the state of Illinois. So the good news is, both our schools are in the best conference in the state of Illinois, if you follow my logic. So we start from that point and that is not a bad starting point to see what we can resolve in the future. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody had accurate information, there have been a lot of rumors and innuendos flying around all over the place and when we reported to the board and the community, we wanted to make sure that we had accurate information moving forward. So unless the board has any questions or the students on this, then we'll leave this and move on.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, I think the first one's probably easy. Any impact on the kids as far as wanting to play football in a bigger conference? Are they, you know, concerned about that and because of that, we could see enrollment drop or too soon to tell? We'll see where that goes.
Right, so too soon to tell. I, I think, I think the, the idea of playing those schools isn't going to be a determinant, but should we get in that conference and then really struggle?
Yeah.
Then I think, then I think you'll start to see an impact on that.
Okay. And then, second question, I mean, maybe I don't know enough about it, but it seems like a rogue group of people can get together and just like willy-nilly change the conference alignment?
Yes, we can't, I guess, I was going to say unfortunate.
Well, in the NCAA, this is even crazier.
Yeah, it's, it's somewhat akin to that, I think that's probably a good example, where colleges are moving in some sports to be in more major conferences to get greater national exposure. It's, it's somewhat similar to that, but I think it's the opposite for those schools. They're looking for an opportunity to have maybe more success.
Yeah, no, I get that.
You know, down the road rather than compete on a, on a bigger stage, I think. But in answer to your question, yes, the, the truth is that we have no way to prevent a school or schools from leaving the conference at some point.
Okay, and then my other two questions are somewhat related. So is there nothing IASB can do about something like this and/or is there nothing that can be done legally about this?
No, there's really nothing that can, can be done legally about it and the IHSA will simply recognize that conference. They've got a minimum number of members, they'll apply through a system, there is nothing to prevent that from happening. In fact, some of the folks that have been around the area for a while will remember, I'm going to be close on my dates here, John, you might have to, since you were here, might have to help me with this, but 96, 97, 98, the reason that Grant and Wakanda and Round Lake and the current, most of the current Prairie Division schools ended up in the NSC and we had two divisions is because one of, one of the schools had left the old Northwest Suburban Conference and left Grant and Wakanda and Round Lake High School without a conference for the coming season. With the coming addition of Vernon Hills High School, the NSC superintendents, which are all the schools now in the Lakes Division, the larger division, including Libertyville, really saw that situation and saw that as being very unfortunate. So NSC reconfigured itself to not only take care of Vernon Hills, which was their obligation to do as a, a kind of a member district, but also to bring Grant and Wakanda and Round Lake into this conference. So the NSC has helped some schools in the past, which is why we've evolved to where we're at now with 14 schools.
How come Lake Zurich came in until like 2000?
Yeah, they came in, Lake Zurich came in later as, as part of that. It's interesting about this conference is one of the oldest conferences in the state. I heard somebody mention Lake Forest over here, but Lake Forest has been, started in this conference, I think, was the third or fourth school, Zion Benton was one of the original ones, back in the late 1930s. So there's been a long history as the Lake County has grown, of schools adding to the North Suburban, so it's a, it's a, it's one of the old kind of hallmark conferences in the Chicago metropolitan area and, oh, it's on Pat, I'm sorry, you have more questions?
I mean, all right, my comment, it is what it is.
It is what it is. Yeah, it is what it is.
And to be honest, I mean, the whole, we're playing in a different conference thing doesn't really bother me that much, but I'll tell you what does, the process here frankly, is pretty unprofessional.
Yeah.
And I'm surprised in a conference with the kind of schools that we have would actually do that. And so somewhere, in my opinion, there was a serious breakdown in the leadership structure that allowed something to happen that never should have happened, so, you know, I guess we'll see what happens. Let me make sure I'm clear on that.
Right.
I'm not suggesting it was our leadership.
No, 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 I understand that.
But I mean, somewhere, some way, I mean, it's not like you don't get together with the other superintendents, it's not like our athletic directors don't get together and for some reason, we were, we were left out of this discussion and it just has a bad feel to it, that I don't think, that I really just don't think is appropriate in a, in a school environment like we have. I mean, I even understand it more in the NCAA where it's big money involved and, you know, everybody's kind of grabbing their own, but here, in the interest of the kids, I don't really get it.
Well, I, I think.
There it is, it's on record, enjoy it.
I think I could speak, I think I could speak for my colleagues in, in saying, it would have been nice to have some advance notification. As John and Marina know, we finished the cycle on this discussion group, all three of the NSC groups, the superintendents, principals, and the ADs looked at the report, evaluated it, and we kind of left it, everyone's understanding was, you know, it's not a great situation, it's problematic, but we're going to go ahead. And not too long after that, June 10th or so, is when I and the other superintendents of the Lakes Conference got a phone call to come to the meeting and apparently there had already been a couple of meetings to talk about the possible formation of the conference. So I would say our lagging concern here with our colleagues is that it would have been nice to have a heads up, that we're going to go ahead and move forward with a conversation. Nobody can fault schools for looking at what they think is the best interest of, of their kids. We understand that, we're superintendents, we're principals, we're athletic directors, we all get that. I think the communication could have been better on this one.
Yeah, just, so one more question, I know we got a busy night, so do we have any idea were the, were the other boards aware of this while it was taking place and supportive of it or did they get notification of it at the last minute only to, and frankly speaking, they may not be fully informed on the process or lack thereof that led to this, I don't know whether we know that or not.
You know, I don't, Pat, I don't know the answer to that question.
So we'll, we'll learn more, but I mean, at some point, maybe we need to express our displeasure to the heads of each of those school boards and just say, you know, hey, this is really not a good thing. I would certainly hope that this kind of thing doesn't get momentum and impact other areas where we're all supposed to be working together, being open and being transparent and trying to do things globally or, you know, across the state in the best interest of the kids, so we'll see.
Well, and I would say, I've been asked, and I'm sure John's been asked this question too, if, if the new conference, we don't know what the name of the conference is going to be yet, but if the new conference were to come back and ask us if we were interested in joining that conference and we would be a ninth team, again, we would be creating that crossover football scenario with the odd number again, but if they were to ask us, would we evaluate and consider that offer? And the answer is yes, we certainly would because that might be in the best interest of Vernon Hills student athletes. So the conference has just been formed, we don't know if we're going to get such a, an offer at some point, but we would certainly take a look at that offer.
That would be being invited to the conference we just got kicked out of?
It would be taking a look at that.
At this point, it would be even harder for me to get it, but that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, good news, if I get it correctly, would, does this mean Vernon Hills and Libertyville would play every year?
In everything.
Okay, so even if we, and the Vernon Hills side didn't win, I think that'd be kind of fun, so.
Why are we making that assumption? North Chicago's the other school that's going to stay?
It's all part of the strategy.
Well, North Chicago is part of the six, yes. North, North Chicago, North Chicago is the smallest school in the NSC, but North Chicago is part of the six in the Prairie Division.
So, so they're without?
So we were the only school, we were the only school in the Prairie Division that wasn't asked into the new conference. And if, if the math here, if the math worked like this, if they were trying to get to an even number of eight and you're bringing the two, and your desire is to bring the two Grayslakes in who have been up in the Fox Valley Conference, which has really morphed and grown over in McHenry County, so travel's difficult there particularly in the afternoon, and then you're trying to get to eight, so if you start with Grayslake, then the math says you have six other schools. And so we weren't part of the six other schools. And had it not been, had we been, somebody else would be in the same position that we're in, which would be equally as difficult for them. So any way that went, it was going to be not a good scenario for one school and in this case, it happened to be Vernon Hills.
Okay.
Okay?
Stay tuned.
All right, FOIA requests, after that long report, FOIA request, the board will note you had one freedom of information request in your packet tonight and Pat, I believe that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, so now, I'd like to invite anybody from the public that would like to speak. Again, I'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less and we will not likely respond at least directly to your comments, we'll sort of see how this goes. All right? Just, and if you could just state your name.
Just, and if you could just state your name and, and where you live for the...
My name is Frank Barardi. Uh, like the great representatives we have here, I too am a senior in Libertyville. Been here thirty years, have three daughters that graduated from Libertyville High School and now have nine grandchildren, two of whom are present students at Libertyville High School. Uh, I have two points I want to make. The first point is, uh, this school board has been very responsive to the public, the few of us who represent the public. This is my fourth meeting, and, uh, they listen to us. They've been gracious. We've had good and give and take. And not only the, the good and take, but I've seen some results that the board has created in terms of abatements, uh, looking carefully at the money that we're spending and took us seriously. It wasn't just lip service. So I want to thank you for that because we appreciate the fact that you took us at heart and did something about it. The second point I want to make is regarding the stewardship you have of the money. I think as I see it, the board has two stewardship roles. One is to provide excellent schools, great product for the schools, educate our children, give them a good basis to be productive adults. And from what I've seen, we do a great job with this. We've been nationally recognized with a lot of good academic awards, and I want to compliment you for that. The part regarding the stewardship of the funds, I think, is a long and strong area that we as a public want to see you improve. You're voted in to represent the public in our pocketbooks. And quite honestly, I think the money that has been given to the, the school board through the taxes has been not poorly spent, but hasn't been managed very well. We have a large surplus, and yet we've seen taxes go up. Now, we know there'll be abatement. So what I'm asking you to do is this. I have a request and a challenge for the board. It's to look at the fundamentals of how you think about the public's money. Now, you're hot, you're, you're appointed to represent the public and you come in, but yet it seems like the culture of the board is such where there's a lot of good money there, and yet it's spent in a way that we're not quite sure we would be spending it if it were our own vote to spend that money. Now, I don't know whether it's the structure of the culture, whether you vote and you get into the board and the, well, we've got the money, so let's spend it. So I'd like you to look at what causes that to happen. I'd like to see it where it's never necessary for the public to come in and sort of ask why we're spending this money. That's why you're here, is to represent the people and to think about it as if it were... I know all of you are faced with the same amount of taxes that we are. And I understand why we have such a large surplus and have so much money that we can spend and taxes still go up. So I challenge you to look at that and look hard at it, not so much where it requires the public to come in and sort of ask the hard questions, but to be able to ask those questions yourself in your daily deliberations and in your discussions about should we really be spending this money on this? So that's my challenge and my request. Thank you and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Jerry Verbatim, and I've been a resident of Libertyville for thirty-five years. I have sent two boys, and they both graduated from Libertyville High School. And I was very pleased with the pro, with the, uh, product. They became good citizens. Now I have granddaughters that are also gonna be attending Libertyville High School, and I'm very pleased about that. What I'm not pleased about is, uh, and let me, let me preface it by saying, it started, um, back in the spring when I got my tax bill. And, um, it went up substantially. Was not happy about it. Some people said, well, mine went down, mine went up, you know? And I hear all this, you know, confusion about how taxes are allocated. The issue is cost. I peeled back the onion and looked at District 128 and said, wow, um, it's accounting for about five hundred and forty dollar increase in my taxes this year alone. So I decided to go to school board meetings. Now, lessons should be learned to our younger generation. And you kids that are sitting there right now, stay involved. Because when you're a young person, raising a family, going up the corporate ladder, fighting to survive, you don't pay attention to this. When you're sixty-nine, you're retired, you're on a fixed income, and you want to live here and die here and watch your kids and your grandkids grow up, you'll pay attention. So I went to school board meetings. And the school board people are good people, and I applaud you. As Frank said, you know, it's a job that you're elected to do for no money, but please remember, you are the voice of the taxpayer. I am talking to you now as a taxpayer. The cost of the education for the kids in District 128, which is roughly twenty-five thousand and change per kid, per taxpayer, that's a lot of money. And, you know, when we find out that we're sitting on a surplus of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty million dollars, okay, I want to know why. How did it come about? I mean, if it had to come from the taxpayer, it's a taxpayer's money. Now what are you gonna do with it? Is there abatements on the line? Are they gonna be given back the taxpaying, taxpayers' monies? Or are you gonna spend it? And if you're gonna spend it, why, where, and how? If it's a big chunk of money you're gonna spend with this a hundred and twenty-five million dollar surplus, the taxpayer should know, it's a taxpayer's money. I'm anticipating a, a decrease in my taxes from District 128. We have talked nothing about cutting programs, about impacting the quality of the educations. All we've talked about over the last four board meetings is how are we managing this money? And where is it gonna go? I hear seventeen million dollars for a new pool at Libertyville. Holy man! Why? I hear a new gymnasium here. This is a wonderful facility. First time I'm here. Why a new gymnasium? I'm hearing a dance floor. Five and a half million bucks or five million bucks. Come on. We need to be, this is, these are tough times. I don't want to be taxed out of my house. As I said, I want to live here and die here, watch my kids grow up here. As Frank has indicated, we challenge the school board to represent the taxpayer. We're, we challenge District 128 to spend the money wisely, put a budget together that's managed, tracked, and so we know where we stand and what we're gonna do. I looked at the agenda, I see, uh, an item number five, and it talks about the approval of the budget. Well, we probably should have had for comments after that, but I guess we don't. At any rate, I thank you for the opportunity to be here. I thank you for talking to the young kids. We are the taxpayers. You will be the taxpayers. Okay? Remember, you have elected officials, school board members, to represent you and how and where you spend your money. And this a hundred and twenty-five million bucks or whatever it is, okay? Demand to know where it is, why it's being spent, and how much is coming back. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Sure, go right ahead.
Good evening. Uh, Bill Colman, Carriage Hill Circle in Libertyville. Uh, first of all, um, I'm actually delighted you students are here tonight. Uh, I don't have as many, uh, as Frank has, but I had three boys who went through LHS. And let me share, uh, just briefly what my oldest boy told me. Uh, he went to USC, and he, I think he was in his sophomore year, and he came home for vacation, and he said, Dad, I, you know, LHS really prepared me well to compete. I, I'm at a, a school where there's kids from all over the country, and I got a great preparation. Uh, and I can do, he worked very hard. That's what he also learned to do at LHS. But, um, he, he was able to really do well. Right now, uh, well, he, he ended up getting his M.D., and now he's a radiologist out in California. So, uh, you're well positioned. You have an incredibly valuable, um, background, so make sure you take advantage of it. Having said that, I mean, it also comes back to, uh, comments to the board. As you've, you've heard from the previous two speakers, uh, what has been going on at LHS and now Vernon Hills is, uh, it's working very well. Uh, and that, I, I like the term stewardship that, that Frank brought up. And that involves, how do you, how do you maintain the quality? How do you, uh, go beyond the status quo and make sure you continually improve it? But how do you avoid just throwing money at it, uh, in a, in a situation of diminishing returns? That's really tough. I, you, all of you have done, I, I reiterate what's been said before. All of you have done a great job. But, uh, the taxpayers, uh, are really in, in the middle of this now with, with what's going on and the, and the cost and, and where this might go in the future. We have, uh, a large budget excess, uh, surplus, and, um, I'm not quite sure where that came from. Uh, we, we, you've shared some of that in previous meetings. But I think, uh, that's, uh, a situation that, that really, uh, warrants a significant tax mitigation. Uh, I, I know there's some discussion of that, but I'm sure it's not, uh, in, in access of a hundred million. Uh, the other, the other point is that, um, uh, there are three large budget items that, you know, with this surplus, that brings them outside the referendum process. These are, these are big ticket items. Pool, and you've heard about those before. Uh, the pool, the gym, and, and the dance floor. Uh, the question I have for you, uh, without, without repeating what you've, you've heard, uh, from the previous two speakers, is to what extent those numbers that you're gonna approve tonight, I assume, to what extent are those numbers, uh, defined by a competitive bidding process that, that defines the actual cost? And, uh, how do you reach, um, you know, to make the strategic decision on, on what to do with a new pool? There's an existing pool. Uh, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that's gonna be covered over and used for something else. A new facility is gonna be built. What are the pros and cons of doing that? And importantly, how does that relate to the costs of all of those? So, uh, I hope that, uh, there's an opportunity for you to respond to that question as we move forward through the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Scott McFadries. My address is nine 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 McClintock Drive in Burri, Illinois. I believe on the nineteenth of August, I submitted a bid protest to the administration, to Dr. Villa and the administration staff. So I apologize if the board members did not receive that. That was probably a glitch on my end. It was in regards to, um, the brain school demolition project that you guys are gonna actually submit for award tonight. And like I said, I don't know if you got it, but in, in the protest I submitted and, and showed some stuff where, uh, there was, uh, thirty-nine OSHA violations against this company from the period of two thousand and five to two thousand and fourteen. Along with that, there was two newspaper articles that I submitted, uh, from a school in Wisconsin where, uh, the Wisconsin Department of Administration removed them from a project because of their unsafe nature and the way they work. Another article that was in the paper was, uh, where they were removed because they had a con, they had a man that worked for the company that was stealing off the project because the company told him that they weren't paying him prevailing wage, and this is how he had to get the money to pay his member, the men that worked for door their money. So, uh, with stuff like this, uh, and, you know, we're talking about you can't put a price on the safety of your children. I'm hoping that you'll at least take into account what we've talked about here, and if not, at least, you know, they're not a, you know, when you, when you award the project, you're rewarding it based on the lowest responsive and responsible contractor. To me, and I did research the other contractors too, the second low, third low, with, you know, with violations. And, uh, the second bidder did have a violation, one. You know, one based on the other that had thirty-nine, your little bidder. So, and, 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 you know, I feel that they're not a responsible contractor. I mean, if, if they've had that amount of violations in this amount of time, and then the newspaper articles that I read on them, I'd like to think that you guys wouldn't want them working for this, for the taxpayers for this area, for the school district. So, I'm asking you to at least either remove them and give it to the second low bidder, or if not, at least put it out for rebid and give everybody the opportunity to rebid the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Um, so I'm never very good at not sticking to no comment. Uh, so let me just clarify just a few things. All right. Number one, just to clarify, the budget we're approving tonight will not include things like a pool, a gym, and a dance floor. Okay? So I want to be perfectly clear, we're not approving any of those capital projects at this point. Um, as a board, we have not approved those capital projects. Uh, we are in the, I'll call it exploratory phase for several of those. Uh, that doesn't mean that we would even necessarily go through with them. Uh, I will say that I believe the pool and the gym are really the two highest priorities and, and the things we are looking at most near term. Uh, but neither of those have been approved. Assuming they are ultimately approved, then they will absolutely go through a complete competitive bidding process. And, uh, as we do with all of our major expenditures, um, those projects will be, um, done by the, the lowest responsible bidders. Okay? Uh, I can assure you that before those projects are approved, there will be, excuse me, a lot more discussion. Um, you know, we can certainly make sure that at least some of that discussion and the, and the most relevant parts are done here in the, the board meetings, which are televised, so the public has complete and total transparency to everything that we are planning to do. Uh, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear that, um, the budget we'll discuss tonight does not include those projects. Okay? Now, just a couple other sort of higher level comments. Uh, first of all, I, I want to say that I, I, uh, I think I can speak on behalf of everyone on the board. I certainly hope that we take our responsibilities of stewards of the taxpayers' money seriously. Um, as you mentioned, uh, I'm one of them too. Uh, and I would challenge anybody to have a higher increase in taxes than I had last year. Um, and I had very much the same response that Jerry did. If you don't believe me, you can call my wife, and she'll be more than happy to, um, explain that to you. But, uh, I, I share those concerns. Um, and, and we do take it seriously and, and understand that we, we need to do that. Okay? Um, so my commitment, as long as I'm on the board, is to make sure we do that. I, that doesn't necessarily mean we'll agree with every decision that every taxpayer wishes we would make. But I think we, we're gonna work, you know, continue to work hard to make sure that those things that we do that, that require us to spend, um, I'll say more money or even the money that we already spend, we do in a responsible manner that really balances, I think, the needs of the students as well as, as those of the taxpayers. Um, just a, a couple comments on strategy on, on surplus. Uh, I think it's really a high-level strategy of this board to not use surplus funds for the purposes of funding, uh, I'll call it regular and routine operating expenses. Uh, I think our philosophy is that should we choose to do that, uh, we will ultimately put the district in, uh, a difficult financial place, um, that would require ultimately some sort of referendum, which if, if it didn't pass, would, would really jeopardize the programs, um, that we offer. So, I think at least at the highest level, we've said if it, when it comes to just paying our routine expenses, we want to balance the budget. We want to match our revenues with our expenses and avoid that temptation to, to use those reserves, um, to, to do that. So, we look at the reserves for the purposes of what I'll call... So we look at the reserves for the purposes of what I'll call more the one-off events, things like a one-off capital project that's not going to be a recurring project, that is a project we can choose to do or not to do. I think we also believe that in our current environment, in Springfield and in the US government, with the uncertainty that's there, we anticipate potentially needing some reserves to cover some of those unanticipated expenses that may come our way. And so we see the one-off kind of things as a good use of reserve funds, and so we certainly plan to do that. But we really do avoid that temptation to use that, I think, to fund our normal operating expenses. So at least at a high level, that's sort of where our head is at. We're certainly committed to further dialogue on this topic. I know in the last meeting, we talked about putting together some additional public sessions. We've done things in the past which we affectionately have called Finance 101, where we try to go out and educate the community on school finances and the basics of school finances. And I think we have ongoing discussions with respect to, in some more detail, maybe District 128 Finance's 201. Where we're willing to share a lot more with respect to what we have, what we're planning to do with it, solicit some, you know, public feedback on that, and so I think we're committed to do that. You know, I just want to emphasize, we really value the fact that you guys have, for what now fourth or fifth time, come out. We have tried to take your feedback seriously, and I know I for one, and I think on behalf of all the other board members, just appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to give us input, and we'll certainly take it to heart as we go forward, okay? So I hope we see you again, and, you know, keep us posted on how we're going. All right? Anybody else want to make a comment or two? Good? All right. And we got everybody, okay? And then I suspect we'll hear more about the other issue when we get to the Brain and Contract, okay? All right, so thanks again for all your feedback. Okay, listed in the agenda, item number three is the consent vote agenda that was reviewed earlier this month in committee. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
I move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, we have several items on that little agenda. First is Policy 4170, Safety, and that has been updated to include mandated components to school safety plans, school safety drills, and AED plans. Then we have Policy 4175, Convicted Child Sex Offender Criminal Background Check and or Screen and Notifications, and that has been separated from Policy 4170 and will describe situations in which a convicted sex offender can be on the school grounds. For example, voting may be one of those. Also, it lists requirements for background checks, background screens, and distribution of the way we will notify parents as required by the Sex Offender Community Notification Law. Then we have Policy 5280, and that is Educational Support Personnel Duties and Qualifications. That has been updated to comply with ISB rule changes regarding the fact that all ESP must now hold an educator license with stipulations endorsed for paraprofessional, and we've been doing that all along. This is just an update in our policy, in our written policy. We've been hiring that way all along. Then Policy 6150, Home and Hospital Instruction, that has been updated to include students who have not been identified for special education services. So these are just there for a first reading, we don't need to vote, but if anyone has questions or wants further discussion at this time, we can do that. Anybody? Otherwise, we'll list these again for next month, and then we'll vote on them at that time. Okay, so then we move along to the 2014-15 amended school calendar, and that is as presented. The changes there were purely for assessment dates, and we discussed those assessment changes in committee. We need a motion to approve those.
I move to approve the amended school calendar for 2014-15.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then next we have Employment of Employees, and we're looking for a motion to approve all of those as listed.
I move the employment of employees as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to highlight, because it is a long list, again, if I recall, there's only one position that's an incremental on this list relative, the rest are basically all replacements, correct?
And resignations.
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't want anybody to look at this list and say, wow, we're hiring a lot of new people, that's not the case, these are virtually all replacements. Okay, roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And that concludes the Program Personnel Report.
All right, thank you, Chairman Batson, Facilities and Finance Committee.
Okay, first item on the facilities and finance is something that's, a couple items here that are of interest to a lot of people, the approval of the FY15 budget, and there's several components to this. We need to vote on these separately, I believe? Okay.
Need to vote on each one of them?
Yeah.
And the attestation, yeah, okay. So we'll start with the certification of revenues. Is there any background we need to?
This is just certifying to the county clerk that the revenue statement and the levy pool will be realized here in this district.
Can I make a motion that we approve the certification of revenues as listed?
Second.
Roll call?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is the attestation of budget, and there's a formal motion here to be read. Yeah, is there any background?
It is just, once again, filing with the county clerk's office, letting them know that the district Board of Education met on a particular date that the public hearing was held on the budget, and that the budget being submitted is on the legal format as required by the state. So we filed that with the county clerk, we filed that with the regional office, and we key a copy of the budget on display in our offices as well as it's posted on our website.
Okay, and that is posted already, or it will be posted?
It is posted already.
Okay.
It was required to be posted before we had the hearing, three days prior to that.
Can I make a motion that we approve the formal attestation of budget as presented?
Second.
Any discussion?
So let me just, I just want to highlight two points, okay? So one, our overall spend excluding the contingency fund, okay? And I believe there was one other item, was that?
Increase in the bond and interest.
Yeah, okay, so between the contingency fund, which we budgeted for, but in our year-over-year comparison, it actually is an increase to the planned spending anyway, because we did not spend any contingency last year. If we take that out, and we also take out the increase in the bond and interest fund, our overall increase in spending overall for the year is about 3%. Okay, so I'll also say that as part of the budget process, one of the things that we did do this year, I think for the first time ever, is we actually tasked the administration a million and a half dollars from our preliminary budget review and asked them basically to go find a million and a half dollars of cuts from the proposed budget, so that we would actually reduce that increase from about 5% to down to 3%. Okay, so it was a good process.
But these are not going to result in any cuts to our programs or students.
No, we found other ways to cut the spending without impacting programs.
Will not directly impact programs.
I think everybody's comfortable with those cuts, so we're not talking about cutting programs and changing the educational experience you guys get, okay? But we felt that, you know, those were cuts that we could do and they were necessary to do, and so that's how we really got our spending increase down to about 3%. Okay, so we're not going to spend a lot of time tonight talking about the details of all that, we did, we now had, what, two, at least two, maybe three meetings to talk about it, and all we're going to really do tonight is take formal action then to approve the budget. All right? Again, it's posted online, I believe?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay, so if anybody would like to see it, it's there, and we're certainly always open to further feedback.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the board? Okay, hearing done, may I have a roll call, please?
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we have a couple other items here, the Village of Libertyville TIF amendment, so this is an amendment to the existing TIF agreement, is there some background you'd like to?
Yes, this is an extension of a TIF, and that was done in 2008. At that time, the TIF document indicated that the parking would be on the east side of Milwaukee. Since then, the village has been trying to obtain property across the street, and is still trying. However, they've asked us to approve building the parking depth on the west side of Milwaukee to, by the civic center. So basically, it's a change to a governmental agreement to say both east and west side of Milwaukee.
Yeah, it seems to me like the original document was, okay, we want to be fair and put one, a parking structure on each side of Milwaukee, but the real estate just isn't, they can't find the real estate to be able to build that, so we're adjusting the wording so that it can be, we could put a second one on the west side if necessary, if they...
Right, as they continue the efforts on the east side, they would like to continue exploring the west side.
It's a minor wording change, yeah. Okay.
But they're not actually extending the TIF, they're just changing.
No, and there's no change at all other than just that.
Yeah, just the allowance, being able to locate it someplace other than this very specific wording that was there before.
And of course, we recommend approval of that.
Yeah. So do we have a motion?
As I move, we accept the Village of Libertyville TIF amendment.
Second.
Any other questions or comments related to this? Okay, roll call, please.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Okay, and we have another item here, but it does not require a vote at this point in time, but the round out, for informational purposes, round out 176 corridor TIF, another TIF item.
Right, at this time, what the Village of Green Oaks is requesting is to have presence at the joint review board meetings, to have somebody from the school district be present there when they have their, being the first meeting is planned for September 17, and generally I have attended those TIF meetings for the school districts.
Okay.
Basically, that's just informational.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little bit more about that area, that somewhat industrial corridor along 176, right? I think most people are familiar with that.
They've been attempting to do it for a while, and now they just want more involvement from the taxing bodies.
Do you have any other feedback from any of the other taxing bodies?
I have not, I have spoken to my colleagues in Green Oaks, and they will be there too.
Okay, thank you, and we have...
Did we ever check, did we ever check what portion of our revenue comes from that? I mean, what would they hit us?
I do not have all the pin numbers from them, I'm hoping on September 13, they'll provide us with more information.
Okay, I'm just curious what revenue we would forego.
I believe it's limited.
Okay.
For having said that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
If you're theory holds, it would be good.
Yes.
Okay. Next items, we have two bid recommendations to consider.
Yes, Mr. Batson, I'd like to thank the Labor's District Council Labor Management Cooperation Committee of nine surrounding counties for their concern in our bidding process and our project. Upon receipt of the letter from the council, this copy went to our architect, who reviewed with Door, the company that is presumed low bidder, the points that were outlined in the letter. Point number one, this company, Door, although it is not a union company, it must by state law pay prevailing wage. The laws in Illinois do not state that we must hire a union company. This company's been in business for 38 years nationwide. They have had 39 violations, that's a true statement. Although I cannot ascertain, nor can our architect ascertain, the severity of those violations, because some of them were very low in the fine that was levied, so I have to assume they're not serious. Number two, about the employee that was arrested for stealing on the job, that is correct. An employee stole copper tubing. Again, in looking at that, that doesn't make a company a bad company, it makes that employee that they hired a bad employee. Many companies and schools and police force, I can go on and on, have a bad employee. Again, that doesn't reflect on the organization. A concrete block fell on a employee that worked for the company on one of the jobs and hit his car. That was a safety violation, that disturbs me more than any of the others, because this job is in a close proximity to a lot of houses. In analyzing this letter, I would have wished and hoped that the labor council would have come with the letter upon the bids when they were read, so we'd had more time to look at and so forth. In analyzing these bids, this company in Cook County, which is a tough county to do work in, especially this type of work for a non-union company, did the Strogers Hospital demolition to the tune of $10 million. They have done several HUD, Chicago HUD housing demolition projects to the tune of $7 million. I guess what I'm saying, we're not dealing with a ma and pa shop here, we're dealing with a large corporation. Before they start the project, if the board awards this contract to them, we will sit down with them and go over all these points, which they are aware of, because we've contacted them to find their response to these. We take every one of these serious. All we want is this project to be done correctly, on time, and safe, for the best bang for our taxpayers' dollars. I see no way of not accepting this bid as the lowest responsible bidder. I see a lawsuit if we don't accept it, which would mean nothing more than more cost for attorney and legal fees and a big delay in the project. On a personal note, if I may, it'd be easier for me if two other companies on that list got the bid, because I know them and I've worked with them, and they're excellent companies. But with that being said, are there any other questions on this, Mr. Batson?
Got a recommendation?
Yes, I do, I...
I recommend that we approve the bid from the Door, as our architect has outlined, that we approve the bid for the base bid and not accept alternate bid number one in the amount of $484,800. Alternate bid number one, which we are not recommending, that you do not accept, at the time when the specs were written, we did not know if IDPEH, remember them? Would now, would allow us to use the concrete foundation as a fill in the base, so we put that in there in case they would not. IDPEH said that they would accept it, but Door does seem to have a secret for them to take the concrete blocks away, get them off-site, and bring in gravel as is in the specs. They saw no savings to us for that, that's their business. And remember, if we are not pleased with the process of this and the progress of this project, we have a performance bond that at any time we can say, we're not doing the job, we want to go after you with performance bond. There was one other thing, and excuse me, I'm going to forget, they had some, a worker who did not pass the background check on one of the projects, that's not good either. We require that in our specs and do check that very seriously, going to it very seriously. In fact, this summer, we took to doing criminal investigation checks on the projects ourselves and had the workers come to our district office for that to be done. And in two cases, we did not allow, excuse me, in one case, Mr. Fleming did not allow one employee for a company to work, because he didn't feel his background check was sufficient to work in our schools, and in the other, we delayed the project because we really wanted more in-depth. That's my recommendation, sir.
Okay, so assuming we're doing our due diligence, recommendation from yourself, recommendation from our architects, to move forward with this, and we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that we get what we're paying for. Can we have a motion?
Oh, go ahead, do the motion first.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the base bid, not accept alternate bid number one to Door in the amount of $484,800. to Door in the amount of $484,000, what was the last number?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred dollars.
Just a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion question?
So just a couple of questions, if I recall, the second lowest bidder was fairly close in dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars. Okay, so I'm looking to Mr. Mittelman here, just to make sure we're clear. What if any flexibility is there in this, let's just say if, for example, the board was concerned about, actually, let me ask you a couple of questions first. The violations, can you give me some feel for the timing of the violations? Like, are any, you know, what are the most recent ones? You may not know the specific violations, but what I'm trying to understand is, is the pattern of violations a continuing and ongoing one, or are these violations that happened 10 years ago and since then they've been clean?
We had quite a few early on, but we have had some. We had one in 2011, we had one in 2014, six. I can't tell you this American.
I just, I'm really thinking about.
We had some, it's three in 2010. Those, we had one for $400.
The most recent one was 2011? That you know?
No, there's 2013.
Okay, and.
2013, that's, that's quite a few in 2013.
Jess, I think one of the points you were making was the economy of scale of this firm, because they work all over the Midwest and all over the, all over the country, they're doing multiple jobs, often probably at multiple times, would that be correct?
That's correct.
So there are more opportunities for violations?
Yeah, in 2013, they had quite a few violations, and that's a cheap question.
Well, I'd have been a lot happier if people had told me they hadn't had any since 2000, so that, that actually does cause me some concern.
So Jess, how do we, how do we monitor these contractors when they come in to work for us? I mean, how do we make sure they're following OSHA policies, our own policies? Is it strictly, we, we sit them down and we say, these are the rules we want you to follow, but we don't do any monitoring of that?
Yeah, that's monitored by our architect at some point. That's at a pre-construction meeting, after it's awarded, the architect meets with the contractor, meets with building grounds myself and so forth, go over the rules and regulations. The architect comes by and, and supervises and, and respects as the project goes by. As far as OSHA, no, I, we don't control and, we're not, we're not trained for that.
Yeah, that's not your.
We're not.
How long will this project take?
The windows itself probably take about two weeks, I would say about a month to five weeks.
And we, starting in October, obviously.
We're going to wait till after the youngsters are through with their football season.
Right, and then we'll start and then we can get done before the winter season.
The companies that were second or third place, have they union, union shops?
I don't speak for the second.
Is this, the second was a yes or no?
Yes.
It is. Can I ask you, can, I mean, so as it stands today, our understanding is they are, they are the low bidder, we need to go with that, right?
Or we open ourselves up to a lawsuit.
Or we.
Or you rebid, you rebid.
Which delays the project.
Which will push the project to the spring, probably.
Which may not result in a different outcome anyway.
Yeah, that's certainly could be a worse outcome.
Yeah, a real worse outcome, true, yeah.
I guess like the 50 dollar question, is it more common for a non-union company to have OSHA violations than a union company to have OSHA violations?
Ask me a loaded question, sir.
Yeah.
I, I.
We don't know, yeah, we don't.
I mean, you've done these bids for a long time, did you see these OSHA issues pop up with the non-union companies and more often than with union companies? I'm just wondering.
I, I've not had a lot of experience, but chances are, yes, but I've had not a lot of experience.
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair to really make a comment on that one we're in on because, I mean, all right, because it's a good question and I think we should actually consider that, but so.
In order for you to reject the low bid, you'd have to find that Door is not, not responsible.
I mean, in your professional opinion, with 37 OSHA, or 39 OSHA violations, right?
Over 10 years, right?
Is that, let me ask you it this way, is that a clear cut finding of appropriate level of concern or responsibility or whatever it is, or is that put us into some gray zone that?
Well, I think it's a gray zone. I have, I have not looked at the violations, what they are, what the timeframe is. So I'm just hearing about this. So I do think it would be in a gray area. And this is, as you might imagine, when there is litigation over bid, low bidders not getting the, the contract, the question of are they responsible or not responsible is the issue. You have discretion and, you know, looking at, at the violations is something that you certainly have the right to do. But, you know, you have to balance that against other contracts that they've worked on and, you know, whether they've performed in other contracts and, and apparently large contracts too.
Yeah, the question, the question I have is, is there a, a timeframe that we have to act on this, or if we postponed it to gather some additional information? And do we have to, is there a timeframe when this bid is no longer valid?
No, it, we put in there in no, 60 or 90 days, it's either one or the other because we did not know when we were going to get the building back and when we were going to do this. So both the asbestos and the demolishing, we kind of had open-ended.
Jess, didn't, didn't you say you called some of the people that you worked for in the past that night?
Our architect, yes.
Okay, who did they talk to, name two or three of the?
I, I was, the obvious, I believe it was with Decatur Public Schools, that was the one that he involved, because that was the state open one, and I.
I know we, we went over the references at the last meeting.
We did have some references and no one brought this up in the references, is that correct? That there was never even mentioned of any issues?
No.
Right, no, I know that, that's why, you know, this is new to me for all of this.
And what's the district's liability if this company comes in and starts working and they got a serious OSHA violation and somebody gets hurt? What's the district's?
They have to provide us with a certificate of insurance with us as additional insurance warrant. So basically, the liability is being moved over to the company that is doing the job. In addition, as said, you know, therefore, we're really not reporting to our people, too, our people are there all the time. Obviously, this is the demolition site, so perhaps our supervision may not be on a daily basis, as they say with projects that are going on right now. But generally, the liability is shifted over to the person who's the company that is doing the job for us.
So, so talk about the limits on those liability policies and how they compared our own liability policy.
Obviously, we have a high coverage here, okay, because we belong to a, our buying power is a lot more than others. But our insurance company requires us to get certain minimum amounts, I want to say it's two or three million dollars of coverage that the company has to pay.
And that's what the certificate will say, it'll be a.
Yes, it will, you'll have to say with the amount of, of that coverage.
I'm asking how much it's going to be, that's.
Right, it might be stated in the contract, I'm not too sure. But if not, we would ask them, it is generally stated in the contract as to how much it has to be.
Okay.
Do you remember, Jess, is it, is it that big?
It is, it's factually, we don't want that. Now, if you feel uncomfortable about it, you can hold off on it till we do some investigation. If you want to reject the bid, you can do so tonight, however, know that it will take us another six weeks or so before we can bring another bid, because by law, we have to also advertise it for a certain period of time.
So.
Why would you just not, I mean, why don't we just hold up, we'll, there's a next meeting, we do a special meeting and.
Jeff, if we go, Jess, if we go to September, if we wait until the September board meeting, what's that do to our timeline?
We go and we approve it at the September board meeting, no, I always look ready, we may go by the October date.
Well, I guess the question would be, would, would they be able to do that, not knowing whether or not they have the gig or not?
I, I could.
Otherwise, say we could do a, yeah, we could do a special meeting if necessary.
We can just make an activity and two specials to go on at one thing.
Yeah, yeah, we could do a special meeting.
Let me back up one more question, I think, so my sense is, my sense is, because we really can't legally or don't think we can legally choose the second vendor here, your advice is to stick with the low bidder. The question is, if it was, if, if there was enough concern raised here that would allow us legally to be able to make that switch, would you change your mind?
In other words, do you think Door's, in other words, do you think Door's a reputable company after checking references and reviewing that with Mike? That's the real question, Jess.
It's not a fair question because I know.
Tough question, no.
I know the second company is real one.
Yeah, I know that.
And that's putting me in a spot. And, and it's an excellent company, there is no two ways about it.
But that's, that.
My concern, and let me go around, my concern in all of this is, I look at the references of this company and I look at the jobs that this company has done. And I'm thinking, somewhere along the lines, we would have heard or seen, I can't believe that they demolished Stroger's Hospital for $10 million, I've heard nothing. HUD projects, I've heard nothing. University of Kentucky, big project, I've heard nothing. University of Minnesota, $1 million, two. University of Michigan, $419. St. John's Hospital in Johnson, Missouri, $5.5 million.
I, I think, pardon me for, for interrupting, I think the, the main question in my mind at this point in time is, yes, they've had some violations. I think any company that's been in business for some period of time will have a certain number of violations. The question is, is it a matter of, do they have 39 violations just because of the scope and size of their company? And if that's the case, and it's pretty much a, you know, it'll either throw up a red flag or not. It's, it's a lot of violations for that size of company, or when you compare it to smaller companies that have smaller number of violations, it's the percentage similar. So it's, it, to me, it's, you know, I'm not willing to reject the bids, but I think I would be willing to wait a few weeks to get the, the answer to that question, to ensure the answer to that question. It seems like this company's done a lot of very large projects and a lot of work. And so it might not be that unusual, given the scope of how many projects they've done, that this might be a very small percentage of those.
And the amount of the fine that someone's brought, $40 is not a big violation.
It may or may not be. I, I think that's the question that's still in my mind. And so it's, it's less of a, you know, or just to validate that, yes, the references are good, we know the references are, are what they are. It's just to get that sort of sense of the scope of, of what these might mean to a company that size.
I don't know that we need to wait a month.
I, I think we allow, you know, a little more research and if we can do it and, you know, if it takes us a month, if we have the month and we legally have the month and it's not going to set our timeline behind, we take a month, if it's two weeks, then we.
A month will set it.
I just want to make sure.
We can still get those answers.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be fine, too.
Jess, two weeks enough for you to research this with Mike. Okay, let me, let me suggest to Ellen's point, let me suggest that we just, we bring this back at the September FNF committee meeting. And if, we can always have a committee of the whole, because we can vote, obviously, at the committee meeting, we can have a committee of the whole following that meeting, and then we can simply deal with this issue, that would be the only issue on the agenda. Any, does that make sense?
There has to be a special board meeting.
That's.
You can't.
So I'll take it, what are we going to find out in two weeks that we don't already know, putting away the bank?
Well, two things.
You always have most of that.
Number one, I've said this before many times, companies don't put references for people who did, they didn't do good work.
Of course.
Okay, so I'm going to go through their client list and see some other that's not on the list and get their feedback, that's number one. Number two, we're going to have what help of Rick to help me, push me in the right direction, how I go through and check the OSHA violation of this severity of that.
Well, I think we can, we can ask the company to provide, you know, more detailed information. And at least that way, the board will be able to make a more learned decision and weigh those factors that I talked about before. And I think two weeks should be enough. I, I agree that, you know, putting a notice out for a special meeting on the same night as the FNF, assuming we have all the information, we could get it done then.
Yeah, and I think we have.
And the third way, Mr. Miller, is I would get on the phone, I would myself call the support, and have first, and then talk, and I'll let our problems out and say, we need help here, talk.
And I think at that point, we have one of three options. We accept it and move on based on the comfort level, we reject the bids and re, go out and rebid, or we find enough evidence that we feel that this is a non-responsible bidder and we move on to the second person. So I, we have, we'll, we'll know that at that point in time.
Okay, Jess, maybe enough time to do that.
Or are we, or sorry, yeah, and are you, what's your level of confidence, if we waited two weeks to do this, we would still get the work done in time this year? Is it reasonable?
I'm not concerned.
Okay, all right, because I honestly, I'm, I'm sitting here weighing the relative risk. I think if we don't do this, given the issues we've had over the last couple months, I think some of our risks are actually higher.
Yeah, we're believing, yeah, we're believing that, really. So we find out what we find out in two weeks and we move on from there.
So, do you want to get a non-mayor's mind?
No, at this point, I believe we need to reject the motion.
Reject the motion?
Well, you can vote the motion.
All right.
Okay, do whatever, whatever you say.
I think you can withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the original motion.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's a good discussion.
Uh, do we move on with the asbestos abatement? We need to move on with this one. Second bid for the Brainerd Building, it relates to the asbestos abatement.
I'd like the Board of Education to approve the recommendation from Ames, the consultant on our asbestos removal, to award it to HEPA, H-E-P-A, company in the tune of $96,950. That includes the following. The base bid, the alternate number one, which is the abating the old library, in the pre-bid meeting, she had, could not, we didn't raise all the floor and all of this, she asked, there's no idea what's underneath there. So this number is for them to proceed to see what's underneath there. If everything's good and there are no ACMs on, on, in the library, then we would get this as a credit back. But at this time, we do not know. Alternate number two is to abate the windows. And what we did is, and why we broke this out as an alternate, there's two ways to go with this. You could have the demolition company take them down and, and put them and stack them, or you can have a company that does abate come in and do it. The danger of having a demolition, by the nature of the work, your life will have the windows demolished and we have, again, asbestos contained material on the floor and so forth. So we decided, what's it going to cost? So we got the cost, we want the windows to be abated by a asbestos company. Alternate number three, makes no sense for us to accept. If we do our coordination and we do it correctly and we have the building abated and the demolition company come in right away after it, we would not need to, why? Board up all the windows, but two days later, they're going to knock them down. So we save $35,000 by few minutes. If we find out because of our delay here, that's going to see delay in demolishing the building, we're just aboard the lower level, can do it ourselves and not board up, again, saving the $35,000. So I would recommend that we approve this bid for the $96,950.
Okay, do we have our motion, please?
I move to accept the bid of 90.
$96,000.
$96,000.
$950.
$915.
Which includes base bid.
Asbestos abatement.
Alternate one and two, and we are applying alternate numbers.
Base bid, alternate one and two, but not alternate three. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions, comments? I have one question, we, there was some comment at some point in time about water, standing water that might contain some asbestos. Does this include debating that, or is that?
No, because we're not, we're not done with that yet. So when we're, we're done with that part of it, then we'll have some conversation with the village and that will be a separate, that's going to be a separate issue.
Okay.
All right. And again, the good news here is this was under what we had forecasted the village, so essentially they're off the hook on this one.
Correct.
Okay. Good, that was good.
That's good. Any other comments, questions? We have roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Grantzer.
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes Facilities and Finance.
Excuse me, President Rudy.
Yes.
Do we need to take action on the rejection of the demolition bid?
So my understanding was, no, we withdrew the motion.
Not reject.
We just withdrew the motion. Yeah, we didn't reject the bid, the board just withdrew the motion. Okay.
You're okay with that?
Right.
Good clarification in these things.
All right.
Just-
So no property, no seat, all no IASB, right?
Right.
That was all, you want to do other areas?
Well, that's okay, why don't you finish? Well, I just, you know, I, as well as the board, on behalf of the administration, I want to thank Jerry Frank and some of the neighbors that have come for the last several meetings. But I do want to make one point to the public, that this school board, for the 10 years that I've been on the board, spends about 95% of its time in the area of school finance. You're not going to find a school board anywhere in the state of Illinois that spends as much time on finance and digging into finance and finance in detail as this school board. And they will continue to do that and we will continue to refine processes as we have over the last few years. And I don't want anyone to walk away from the meeting tonight thinking that the board doesn't spend that amount of time. Has been, has been evidence to the citizens that have attended, we spend hours on school finance. And so we'll continue to do that, so we're responsible to the taxpayers because, including myself, we are all taxpayers and users of the system in such a way. So I want to thank the board for their work in that area and commit that the administration will continue to work with you so we can provide a world-class education to our students and still be responsible to our taxpayers. And there's always a fine line between that, and we've moved closer and closer to that line in a good way, and we will continue to work with you to do that. But I do want the public to know that you spend the majority of your time on the board working in the area of school finance, sometimes to the point that I think some of our board members would like to spend more time on talking about some of the other things that we do in the school district, but it's important that we do that, particularly in economic times that we're on. So with that, Pat, I'll give it back to you.
Okay. With that, can I have a motion adjourned?
Move?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody, good night.